Called meeting to order. We'll have the invocation from Supervisor Wacamodo and Pledge of Allegiance Supervisor Angus.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for all those present here. We ask for your guidance as we make decisions and ask you to give us the wisdom to do our jobs well. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 38-43103, portions A3 and 4. Motion and action to call for an executive session to be held February 20th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes 38-43103, portions A3 and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to official business. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation and claims. Mr. Epsom.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Committee or legislative reports? We'll start with Supervisor Johnson. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Arizona Utah Economic Coalition reaffirmed and updated our resolution on opening up the Arizona Strip to mining. We sent the resolution to Secretary Zinke and our Utah and Arizona delegations. It will be also hand-delivered today. I'd also like to correct the newspaper headline that we acted too late on our opioid legislation. This board acted as quickly as was legally possible. Legislation started Tuesday and passed Thursday night denying the public any discussion or debate. To draw up parallel, this board held three meetings and a public hearing on our proposed planning and zoning fees and are now in the process of holding seven more since our meeting in the Cato Institute carried an article against the legislation calling it wrong-headed, which was picked up by Newsweek magazine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you Chairman Watson. On the 17th, I joined you and Supervisor Wacamodo along with other elected officials across the state who were joined by nearly 50 state legislators to honor the state and the county partnership at the annual CSA legislative reception. The following morning, we attended the CSA Board of Directors meeting where Attorney Mark Ronovich talked about the national and state opiate crisis and the efforts to combat the abuse as outlined by Supervisor Johnson. We were given a presentation regarding county priorities, which included eliminating state cost shifts to counties, addressing the EORP retirement plan crisis, the lottery funds, and county flexibility language. And then, of course, I've been attending all of the CSA Legislative Committee meetings held each Friday by teleconference. And then I also participated in the opiate teleconference.
Very good. Thank you.
Is a week.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing today.
Supervisor Wacamodo?
On the 17th, I met with Access and Health Choice to discuss continuing medical services in our area. We had a great meeting and moved forward in a positive way to open communication. Also met with you and some of the legislature. Legislators, so I'm going to pass that to you.
Well, thank you Supervisor Wacamodo. Yes Supervisor Wacamodo and I have been busy down at the legislature talking to those people about our water issues, from groundwater issues to the central Arizona projects attempt to abscond with water on the Colorado River Basin. So we've been busy, a lot of miles, a lot of discussions with legislatures, and just know that Mojave County is doing the very best we can at the moment to work on these water issues. That's the end of my report. County managers' report.
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Approval of the January 2nd, 2018 Board of Supervisors regular meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and second for approval. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. On to call to the public. Those wishing to address the Board at the call of the public regarding matters not on the Board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak for them. They are located in the back of the room. Must be done prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to the criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda with the exception of the consent agenda and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this Board. This morning, I have two, one possibly two items to bring this morning. Our first speaker is Mark Shaver. Morning, Mark.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Watson.
Good morning, Mark.
Jean, Gildy, and Lois. Good morning. Try to be informal as much as I can. I'm here to give my little comment on the development fee schedule review. And I took, got my own copy of the PowerPoint presentation. And when I got to home occupation, I was choked up and gagging and everything because my fees went from 75 to 350. So I'm here to say that is there something we can do to keep those fees anywhere between 100 and 150 down that much? Because that's, of course, I'm going to pass that cost off to my customers, but I want my customers to know if they're listening that I am here trying to keep those costs low, but I understand that the county is trying to move to be more self-sufficient in their duties. So I'm just here to say ouch, that hurts. I mean, you know, 75 to 350, that's kind of crazy if you ask me. And there's a rumor addressed that I like to address to a possible project out there on Pierce Ferry Road in Greg's sideout, and that there is a need, not a big one, but a need for a fee-based dump site for RVs that come in through there and camp out in our area. And to me, if that kind of idea was thrown to the developer or to the person who wants to do that, that they might want to figure out how to put something like that in there. That would draw more people into our area, use the recreational that's out there. And best bet, at least, item 54, I can't really say because I'm not going to be here, but that's an odd situation out there in Red Lake. That's a lot of money invested and to have it sit there and just fall by the wayside. I hope something in that press release will address that or lead to more questions anyway. Anyways, I'm just here to say ouch based on that stuff. Y'all have a great day. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaver. On to presentations for two life-saving awards to Detention Officer Deborah Chiga. Sheriff, come on down. Sheriff Doug Suster will be making presentations this morning.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, distinguished members of the Board, Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Epsom, of course, Madam Clerk. I want to thank you very much for continuing to allow us to do this in the public forum. Anytime we have an officer that's worthy of recognition, we truly appreciate the ability to do it here at the Board meeting. And this is an exceptional morning for us. This morning, we are recognizing Detention Officer Deborah Cengura for her heroic actions on two separate occasions. Officer Cengura was working on November 10th of last year and was feeding dinner to the female inmates when an inmate who was called who was not in line, as she should have been, Officer Cengura directed another inmate to look into the cell to see if she was either sleeping or sick. The inmate did as directed and began frantically calling for Officer Cengura to come over to the cell. Officer Cengura did that. She went to the cell and observed the inmate slumped over on the floor. The inmate was pale, non-responsive, was not breathing, and a pulse could not be detected. Officer Cengura immediately called for medical assistance. She then began CPR with the assistance of Detention Officer Dylan Stevens, who was on scene at this time. And I'm happy to say that the inmate was successfully revived and transported to the hospital where she made a full recovery. As a result of her quick response and her assessment that CPR was immediately needed, Officer Cengura saved the life of the female inmate. Not to be outdone, to continue later that month, on November 26th, Officer Cengura again was feeding dinner to the female inmates. She went to a cell where an inmate was locked down and discovered that the female in the cell was lying on the floor with a sheet wrapped tightly around her neck. Officer Cengura immediately called for assistance and entered the cell to render aid. The inmate's skin color was discolored and she was non-responsive. Officer Cengura struggled to get the sheet loose around the inmate's neck. The inmate gasped for air several times and color began to return to her face. That inmate was placed on suicide watch and was able to remain in the facility under the watchful eye of our medical staff. That inmate has since fully recovered from the incident as well. In both cases, Officer Cengura's timely action and split-second decision-making resulted in saving the lives of both inmates. As sheriff, I am very proud of Officer Cengura and her outstanding commitment to her profession. At this time, I am honored to present Officer Cengura with two Mojave County Sheriff's Office Life Saving Awards. Congratulations and thank you, Officer Deborah Cengura. You'll need a wheelbarrow carrying this stuff out of here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff Huster. You have an outstanding group of individuals under our employ. On to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a Board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items to be removed?
None, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bishop?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing for me.
Supervisor Wacamodo?
None.
Holy cow, we're batting a thousand. We're winning as well as the Philadelphia Eagles this morning. Okay.
Chairman Watson, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items five through 44. Second.
We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda for items five through 44.
I second it.
And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, we move on to the regular agenda. Item number 50, sitting as the Board of Directors of Mojave County Flood Control District. Discussion, possible action.
Excuse me. We have public hearings.
Pardon me?
Public hearings.
I'm sorry, public hearings.
It's just.
Thank you. My page was creased at the wrong spot. Item number 45, here we go. Thank you. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Resolution Number 2018-10. Amendment to the Mojave County General Plan for the Rural Development Area Land Use Designation to Heavy Industrial Land Use Designation for Assessors Parcel Number 404-27-089 in the Centennial Park vicinity. This is in the Arizona Strip. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 45? There being no one wishing to speak to item 45, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I... I move that we approve item 45.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 46, I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the Assessors Parcel Number 404-27-089 from agriculture residential zone to a general manufacturing zone to allow for the operation of a dairy facility in the Centennial Park vicinity in the Arizona Strip area. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 46? No one wishing to speak to item number 46? I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve item 46.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Open the public hearing for item number 47. Discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-012 for the amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a suburban development area to heavy industrial land use designation and an amendment to the Maconico Area Plan from suburban development area to heavy industrial land use designation for Assessors Parcel Number 206-16-022. This is in the Golden Valley vicinity. It's west of Interstate 40 and south of Shinnerrup Drive, Mojave County, Arizona. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 47? No one wishing to speak to item 47? I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, motion to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second for approval? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. On to item number 48, I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the Board Supervisors Resolution 2018-013 for rezone and Assessors Parcel Number 206-16-022 from general manufacturing zone to heavy manufacturing zone to allow for a propane storage tank in the Golden Valley vicinity. That's west of I-40, south of Shinnerrup Drive. Commission recommended by approval by unanimous vote. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 48? I'll close the public hearing for item number 48.
Chairman Watson, motion to approve on this one also.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And second? Discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 49, open the public hearing for discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-014 for special use permit for Parcel Number 2006-169-022 to allow for propane storage and distribution tank in a heavy manufacturing zone in the Golden Valley vicinity. This is west of Interstate 40 and south of Shinnerrup Road. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 49? No one wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing for item number 49.
Chairman Watson, motion to approve? Second.
Motion second for approval of item number 49. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Now to the regular agenda. Item number 50, sitting as the Board of Directors of the Mojave County Flood Control District. Discussion, possible action for the approval of Developmental Services Department organizational redesign within its flood control division as outlined in the attached Board Memorandum whereas through the reclassification and elimination of key positions, the department will achieve a minimum annual personal salary expense saving to fund 305, Flood Control District of $46,550. Anyone wishing more information from Mr. Walsh? Nope. Okay, I'll make a motion for the approval of item number 50.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of number 50. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item 51, discussion, possible action, acknowledge the receipt and refer to Republic Works petition file pursuant to Mojave County Ordinance 2016-09 to have included the Mojave County tertiary road maintenance system and approximate .4 mile section of wagon wheel drive from approximately 380 feet of Jordan Drive to Coronado Road located in Havasu Heights area. Anyone wishing further clarification from Mr. Lotowski? There being none, Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
We have a motion? And second for the approval of 51? Any further discussion?
Excuse me Chairman, we need a little clarification. You made a motion, but you have to say to...
To accept.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to accept.
And second.
And seconded. Okay. Any further discussion? Any further clarifications? Thank you. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 52, discussion, possible action, acknowledge the receipt and refer to the Public Works Department of Petition File pursuant to Mojave County Ordinance 2016-09 to have included Mojave County tertiary road maintenance system and approximately three mile section of East Grossman Road from North Donald Drive to North Bruce Drive located in the Kingman Airport area.
Chairman Watson? I just want to say that the last two, 51, 52, they're just to acknowledge the receipt and the referral of the petition.
That is correct.
Okay. Then I make a motion to approve that.
We have a motion?
Second.
And second? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 53. Discussion, possible action authorize the staff to develop and solicit a request for qualifications for a design-build contractor to dispose of the library district administrative modular office trailers and for the remodeling of the existing branch library facility to include an expansion with approximately about 11,500 square feet for a total estimated project cost of 4.3 million with the remaining $2 million designated as the library district's fund balance for operating capital and contingency. I bring this item to you this morning for the expansion of the library and for the disposition of the current modular trailers that are falling apart. Supervisor Angus, I see you. I'd like to speak.
Well, I just want some clarification. So this item is just for the staff to develop and solicit a request for qualifications. It would come back before us again.
That is correct.
Because, you know, obviously, I believe it should be done when we're doing the budget. So if it's just for that, and that we will be speaking, I'm sure, about this at length, about what we're going to do.
That is correct.
Then why is it, it's just, is it a time thing? Like, why is it we're doing that now? Why is this important now before the budget?
Well, I believe the last time I was out at the library in the administrative trailers that they were falling apart. So it's time to get something done on it.
Okay. So this is just starting the process?
This is the start of the process.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 53 as written. Authorize staff to develop and solicit a request for qualifications for a design-build contractor to dispose of the library district administrative modular office trailers and for remodeling the existing Kingman Branch Library Facility to include the expansion as written.
We have a motion?
Second.
And second? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Item number 54, discussion, possible action to provide an update and authorize as an official press release from Mojave County Board of Supervisors Mojave County's planning efforts to 2017 and now 2018 for the Walupi Basin Aquifer. I believe everyone has received that release. And this, I'll briefly outline the items in the, in the release. There's no, no reason to read it in its entirety. This is the Mojave County planning for the Walupi Basin Aquifer. Mojave County through 2017 and now 18, Mojave County has taken actions to address groundwater pumping in the Walupi Basin Aquifer. Here are a few of our actions. Number one, Mojave County has already begun a stormwater recharge program through our Flood Control District that aims to recharge up to 4,000 acre-feet of water into the Walupi Basin annually. Number two, Mojave County and the city of Kingman have already funded at the cost of about $460,000 over three years a refreshed United States geological survey and study of the groundwater flow model to establish with accuracy the effects of groundwater withdrawals in the Walupi Basin. Number three, Mojave County is working at the Legislature on a reporting program to determine with real data the amount of groundwater being withdrawn from the Walupi Basin over the next three years. And number four, Mojave County is working, also working with Governor's Water And number four, Mojave County is working, also working with Governor's Water Conservation Process to support projection, protection of rural groundwater in a bill in the 2018 legislature. Bring this item to you for authorization as a press release.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize this press release. I think it's very timely and I think the people are wanting clarification, this should give it to them.
Thank you very much Supervisor Bishop. And we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second from Supervisor Wacamoto. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And motion is carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.